Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to this reconvened public hearing of Pittsburgh City Council for today, Monday, December 5, 2022. It is being resumed from our initial beginning of the hearing on September 14 of 2022 as it relates to Bill 592. So with that, Madam Clerk, would you please reread the purpose of Bill 592?
Bill 592, an ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX zoning code, Article One zoning map, Article Two base zoning district, Chapter 904 mixed-use districts, Article Four planning districts, Chapter 908 public realm districts, Article Five use regulations, Chapter 911 primary uses, Section 911.02 use table, and Section 911.04 use standards, Article Six development standards, Chapter 914 parking loading and access, Chapter 915 environmental performance standards, and Chapter 919 signs, Article Eight review and enforcement, Chapter 922 development review procedures, and Article Nine, Chapter 926 definitions, to create three new base zoning districts and other zoning amendments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I am Councilman Kraus. I'll be chairing this afternoon's continuation of our public hearing. I am joined by Councilmember Strasburger. Thank you for being here with me today. I appreciate it. And first, we are going to have a very brief presentation by our deputy director. Did I say that correctly? Deputy Director Dash, as it relates to some of the things we heard on the first portion of the public hearing, some suggested changes that we are mauling about before we continue then with our regular registered speakers. So with that, Mr. Dash.
Yes, so Andrew Dash, Deputy Director, Department of City Planning. As the clerk had noted, this is a change to a number of sections of the zoning code to introduce three new districts: the UCE Urban Center Employment, the UCMU Urban Center Mixed Use, and the RMU Residential Mixed Use. This was done in tandem with the Oakland Plan, the plan for the four Oakland neighborhoods that was completed and adopted by the Planning Commission. And so this is the first phase of zoning amendments to that. As stated, there was an initial public hearing on that, and as a part of that, City Council wanted to do some additional, have some additional discussions, try to have some follow-up. And so did ask for planning to draft some changes which are publicly posted on the Oakland Plan website and in other locations as well. Just to very quickly kind of run through those, the first changes, we did have to make some edits just on some things that, based in the structure of our zoning code, needed to be added, just adding those three new districts in the mixed-use sections of the code, which is really just a Scrivener's error in that they weren't listed in the code. And put in the zoning hierarchy, if we go to the next slide, which just is, in the very beginning of the zoning code, outlining all of the zoning districts. And in the initial amendment that came to you all, that was something that was not included. Moving to the next slide, we'll actually go into some changes of more substance that were requested for us to put together. The first being to add language regarding sidewalks in all three of these new districts, where, to clarify that with the minimum width of sidewalk being requested in the zoning code, that that can be put on private property and located under building overhangs. That was a discussion that had been had post the last public hearing and requested for planning to create an amendment to provide some clarification there, to make sure that that certain circumstance would be permitted. Next, if we go to the next slide, there are a few amendments that are listed on this slide. The first is around the performance point system. So the performance point system is a way for an applicant to move beyond the base height into a maximum height for a building in any of these three districts. The building reuse performance point, which is something that we have in other districts, including the Uptown Public Realm District, was only initially permitted in the residential mixed-use district. Upon conversation, there was the discussion of adding that performance point to the Urban Center Mixed Use and the Urban Center Employment District, so the amendment includes that. There was a clarification relative to the performance point around onsite energy generation, around just enforcement based on when the inspection for that performance point and kind of determination that performance point had been satisfied, and provide some clarity there. The next item that was on here was a change for the Urban Center Employment District. This is, again, the Urban Center Employment District is primarily found on, well, is found on the Fifth and Forbes corridor in central Oakland, that there be an amendment to the off-straight parking areas to allow for that district to have a 100% reduction for all uses. That was something that was previously 50%. Moving to the next slide, there were a couple of other amendments that were in this. First was, just again, kind of a clarification of some amendments to building standards and making sure that it was, that the changes that we were proposing were only for these districts. They weren't for all of the districts across the city in the zoning code. And then, previously, as a part of a-
Repeat that, please, because that is an important point.
Yeah, so, you know, and we had some text relative to some of the development standards that were in these new districts and proposed in these new districts, and we wanted to make sure to provide additional clarification, that those new standards were only for these new districts, that we were not intending on, and wanted to clarify that we were not making any changes to any of the other zoning districts outside of those, you know, outside of these new districts that were to be created and the properties to be rezoned. So the last one was just, this was, you know, there were, initially, there was an Urban Center Mixed Use zoning amendment that was passed by council, and this was, I think, generally known as being relative to the area along Haukett and Boulevard of the Allies. So that was where the Urban Center Mixed Use District was originally put into place. And there was a piece that was added by City Council at the time of allowing for a building-length exemption for Grocery Store General and that used specifically in the code. And so when we had, since that amendment was made by council, you know, in the prior passage that council had made of an initiation of the Urban Center Mixed Use District, it wasn't in the language that we had initially put forth from the Planning Commission. And so making sure to include that amendment that council had already approved in a prior decision, you know, was what we had made sure to amend as well. So that is the entirety of the amendments that, you know, again, had been proposed for, or the department had been asked to write up, you know, after the last public hearing.
So one thing I would like to put on the record before we move into taking public comment, we received communication from the Oak Cliff Community Organization that registered two concerns that they had, which we had not had an opportunity to meet formally with. So I want to make certain that their concerns are put on the record, and then we sent these over to you, Deputy Director Dash. I appreciate that you responded to both of the concerns. And after I read these into the record, perhaps if you'd just give a brief explanation as to why you chose to do what you did. But coming from the Oak Cliff Community Organization here, the first concern was one amendment should be aimed at retaining our full R1A-VH zoning. It should state that parcels 28P, 27, 28P-33, 28P-36, and 28P-9 must remain zoned as R1A-VH and not be transferred to UCMC. The second request that came from Oak Cliff Community Organization was a second amendment should focus on proposed UCE areas along the Boulevard of the Allies that is directly across from our R1A-VH neighborhood and adjacent to areas slated to become zoned as UCMC. We suggest zoning this as UCMU with a maximum height with bonuses of 85 feet rather than UCE. Both of these are aimed at protecting the character of less intensive uses of the current zoning from impacts of more intensive uses that are being considered for new zoning that will affect Oak Cliff. So Director, Deputy Director, we sent these over to you. You did respond, so as I just don't read what your response was, I'd like to give you an opportunity as to how you responded to those two requests.
Yeah, and if we have a chance to bring up the map, we will, but if not, I'll just speak to it.
Sure.
The questions that were being brought up were relative to a series of properties that were on Craft Avenue-
Yes.
-you know, just to the, what is that, the southeast of the Boulevard of the Allies that were proposed to be rezoned from R1A to UCMU. These parcels all include four-to-five-story apartment buildings. So these buildings were noncompliant as far as height was concerned, noncompliant as far as use is concerned, you know, in the way that they are presently zoned. And so, and then those blocks of Craft Avenue, when we look at the uses that are on there, there are those apartment uses, the children's center is on that, the Sunoco gas station is on that. I mean, it really does serve as, you know, as more of a mixed-use street, or mixed-use, you know, those are mixed-use blocks. And so having those rezoned as the UCMU so that not only, you know, relative to the current uses, but thinking about the nature of that block, that the zoning matched, you know, what the intention was, you know, for that block, you know, with the buildings that are there, but also moving forward. And, you know, and that with things like the green buffer and things like the height-reduction zone and the adjacency to the adjoining R1A district, that there would be protections for the adjacent, you know, single-family row house-type districts that are further to the south in Oak Cliff, so relative to that one. And then the other item was relative-
UCE on the north side of the Boulevard of the Allies.
Yes, and that's relative to essentially two sites. One is a former enterprise car rental location that has a parcel that both fronts on Forbes Avenue and onto the Boulevard of the Allies. And then the adjacent parcel is the Hampton Inn site on Boulevard of the Allies. These are on the north side of the street. The south side of Boulevard of the Allies is zoned as UCMU. And these two properties are zoned, are proposed to be rezoned as UCE. And so the first one, the enterprise lot, does have zone, again, you know, although the parking lot and the building are on Boulevard of the Allies, I'd say at least half of the property has frontage on Forbes and is located on Forbes Avenue, and all of Forbes Avenue is in that UCE zone. You know, and then, you know, relative to, I think, some concerns relative to, you know, to height on the Boulevard of the Allies, and this is something that, you know, City Planning had talked with the community organizations, both at some of their monthly meetings as well as through the plan process when we're receiving comments, that with the step-back requirements that are in the zoning code, it would, you know, that basically the frontage, what would be at the frontage of the Boulevard of the Allies would be something that would be no more, no greater than 85 feet, so about six stories, which does, you know, really kind of, you know, match the intention of, you know, both sides of the street. And that, you know, since these properties are on the north side of the street, that, you know, concerns of shadows or things of that nature would not be cast south on, you know, on, you know, where I think there were some concerns of, you know, potential shadows on residential neighborhoods, that, you know, if there were any shadows from taller buildings in that area, dependent on, you know, where the sun would be, it would be potentially to, you know, the west, the east, or the north, you know, but not to the south, where, you know, which those areas to, in those directions are all areas that are either zoned EMI, UCE, or UCMU.
So just one last thing, Director, if I may, before we go. And Councilwoman, please feel free to join in if you wish to. But what brings us here today is a collection of meetings over a number of years throughout the Oakland community, attended by multiple stakeholders, which crafted the Oakland Plan, which went before the Planning Commission, which recommended approval to you and to council. What we find we have here today are some changes that we wish to see, or wish not to see, but some that we do wish to see, based on comment that we've collected through the first public hearing and possibly information that we may collect through the second public hearing. As I summarize that too simply?
Yes, that's, well, no, that's correct. So the Oakland Plan was adopted by the Planning Commission. These zoning amendments were recommended to City Council. All of the recommended, you know, all the things that we've discussed as potential amendments passed the public hearing, you know, are all amendments that do not conflict with the Oakland Plan, you know, and the recommendations of the Oakland Plan in any way. Yeah, so, I mean, you know, so like I said, these were, that was where these zoning amendments were brought forth, was through the two-and-a-half-plus years of community engagement and analysis that occurred as a part of the Oakland Plan.
Appreciate that. I just wanted to make sure that was part of the record. Director, you're welcome to stay here with us. You're welcome to not stay here with us, whatever you choose to, you're welcome to do. I know it's difficult when speakers are coming in your backs to them. So whatever you choose to do, you can do. I would like to move on to our registered speakers. We have 40, so if you find that you come to the microphone and your comments have already been stated, you're welcome to just simply say that your comments have been stated and you'd like to reinforce them. We are going to begin with our first registered speaker, that is Elena Zaitsov, and she wishes to register comment in opposition. Elena, welcome. Thanks for your patience. You have the floor.
I'm Elena Zaitsov. I live in the Oak Cliff neighborhood. Today, I'm representing the Oak Cliff Community Organization, of which I'm vice president. Our letter containing details beyond what three minutes allows has been submitted. Bill 529, creating new zoning districts in Oakland, is fraught with issues. OCO is asking that council does not pass it until more work is done on it. Problems exist with process, boundaries, dimensions, uses, and the performance point system. OCO is not against development. It needs to be done in a manner with consideration of existing residential areas and impacts on residents. This plan was developed without either. In the three months since the first hearing, where most comments were negative, there has been no outreach to OCO as an RCO or to its residents to understand our issues, explain the changes since September, or work towards compromise. I see today that developers were given that courtesy and got more of their asks. Oak Cliff Community Organization is not opposed to some commercial enterprise in Oak Cliff. However, we feel we should have a say in it case by case since we are the ones most impacted. Entire residential streets should not be vulnerable to demolition. Boundaries need to be adjusted so residential parcels are not blanketly rezoned. This calls for an amendment to remove residential parcels 28P, 27, 33, 39, and 9, as well as parcels on Wellsford, Ward, Haukett, and McKee from being rezoned. While we appreciate the length being reduced from 400 to 250 feet, it's still too long as 250 feet is a city block. Heights of 210, 185, and 120 feet do not belong adjacent to residential areas. Coltard Street will become a canyon and Oak Cliff will become walled in. UCE zoning, allowing heights of 210 feet, does not belong right across from Oak Cliff. That height is not in keeping with McGee Hospital or the Hampton Inn. OPR districts designed to protect the character of less intense uses from impacts of more intensive uses are being eliminated. Gone are residential compatibility standards, setbacks, and other protections for our neighborhoods. Our tax dollars are giving us less protection than other neighborhoods while destroying our neighborhood. The use table was developed by city planners without public engagement. The performance point system, never discussed at meetings, was developed by city planners after all meetings were over. A building can reach maximum height through points which don't benefit the community. One-time fines for failure to comply amount to the cost of doing business to get more height. Both the use table and the point system needs to be reworked with community input and a reasoned approach. There is criteria City Council has to consider for zoning changes. How the criteria are not met is outlined in our letter. As City Council, you're to represent the interests of constituents-
Sorry, Elena, that, your time had expired. Your three minutes go quickly. But anyone who wishes to is also welcome to register their comment in writing to the clerk's office via email, and we will make certain that it is indeed distributed to all members. Our next registered speaker is Michael Kamen, and he wishes to register a comment on the bill. Michael, floor's yours. Do we have Michael online? Nope, sorry, he's not online. Next registered speaker is James Young, and James wishes also to register comment. Nope, not on. Millie Sasse. Millie Sasse wishes to register opposition. Hi, Millie.
Hi, I'm here.
Come on, Millie, floor's yours.
Okay. I'm Millie Sasse of Oak Cliff. The Oakland Plan has been flawed since the very beginning of both process and product. Please do not pass Bill 592. The public voted a summary of the latest amendments less than two weeks ago that added more confusion to what was presented by City Planning on the 21st of November. It used an incorrect legal term on Points One and Two, unprofessional at best, and contained a vague reference to some restricted standards in Point Seven that are not clear to me, another layer of fog for the residents to wade through. The process to build this bill has gone through, gone on for two-and-a-half years. It was wrong from the start and continues to get worse. More neighborhoods will be needing community plans. It's time to stop the current process and create a new one. Other neighborhoods should not suffer the inefficient presentations, meetings, and inattention that we have. The Oakland Plan should be excused and pardoned from the current process and should start again after a new process has been defined and put in place, no matter how long that takes. The past two-and-a-half years have been wasted. We deserve a new start. Did you know that the proposed plan is to take four properties out of R1A-VH and places them in UCMU inappropriately, wrong for many reasons? The proposed plan allows many new uses. Have they been fully examined? I suspect not. The proposed plan provides extreme heights and lengths that impact neighbors. Has anybody examined that? The proposed plan will increase parking in nearby neighborhoods due to reduced parking requirements. The proposed plan will change the character of Oak Cliff by introducing retail and other uses with no community oversight. The proposed text for revised Oakland zoning lumps all the areas together, treating them as one unit as it was rolled out to the public. These zoning areas with public information and associated input should have been treated separately. Do you know how many of the original steering committee and those who have written the ridiculous 592 are still around Pittsburgh? I know many who have left Pittsburgh or moved on to other jobs. Why must we be left with the mess that they created? Did you know that many consultants about various topics such as free internet were a waste of money and added little or nothing to the bill? It also is a waste of public's time in team meetings. Did you know that most of the steering committee had no idea where Oak Cliff was located? And I'm guessing that they had never been on the riverside of the Boulevard of the Allies. A quick walkthrough by a few added little to their understanding of the community. Did you know that 106,000 people are in Oakland every day, 2017 data? Of those, almost 95,000 are employees or students who are simply nine-to-five, five-days-a-week people. But the steering committee was composed of 90, 39 people, most from universities and hospitals, with only five seats given to residents who have a vested interest in their neighborhood. Employees, students, and hospital visitors eventually move out of Oakland. Residents who have maintained the residential nature of Oakland neighborhoods and attempt to age in place do not. Residents stay and try to make our city more livable. Unfairly, City Planning has not listened to true residents, and I had expected better. Thank you.
Thank you, Millie. Our next registered speaker is Norman Cleary, wishing to register comment. Nope, Norman is not on. Next, we have Andrea Boikowitz. She too wishes to register comment. Andrea, welcome. Floor's yours.
Hello, thank you. My name is Andrea Boikowitz. I live at 3439 Parkview Avenue in central Oakland, and I currently serve as the interim director of Oakland Planning and Development Corporation. I served on the steering committee for the Oakland Plan process, and my erstwhile colleagues and I have provided extensive feedback to the Department of City Planning regarding the proposed changes to Oakland's residential and mixed-use neighborhoods. We provided this input during the planning process and in public hearings, and that input is a matter of public record. It is essential for the integrity of the public process that conversations about zoning amendments that affect the public realm and the future development or redevelopment of our neighborhoods happen in the open. That said, I do agree with Deputy Director Dash that the amendments DCP is suggesting here are not in conflict with the spirit of the plan, for what it's worth. Wanda Wilson provided testimony on OPDC's behalf in September when this hearing first convened. Among the points that she made, that I would like to reiterate, is our concern about the impact of large-scale demolition to the neighborhood. Apart from root shock resulting from the obliteration of local landmarks and the transformation of the landscape, Oakland residents are most directly impacted by street closures, noise, dust, utility work, and the confusion that can result from construction activity not being properly coordinated. And I can tell you firsthand this is happening even now. We recommend a demolition review overlay be put in place to coordinate city departments to respond to the many issues that will surely arise from the changes proposed here today. I would also like to reiterate my concerns that the educational class room space is still included as a special exception in the UCMU district. Classroom space associated with a college, community college, university, or other institution of higher learning is properly limited to the EMI district, most especially in Oakland, where there is such a district that encompasses the campuses and campus uses of our institutional neighbors. Adding classroom/educational spaces together with laboratories and libraries to the permitted uses of the UCMU district is effectively a blueprint for the backdoor expansion of institutional uses beyond the EMI boundaries. OPDC opposes the inclusion of educational classroom space in the UCMU even with the special exception restriction. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify.
Thanks, Andrea. I appreciate you being here. Next registered speaker is Wanda Wilson, who also wishes to register comment. Wanda, the floor's yours. Welcome. No, she's not on? Nope, okay. Next, we have Robert Hilton Squires, who also wishes to register comment. Robert?
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to testify. I'm Rob Squires. I live at 4301 Bigelow Boulevard in Chimley Farms. And we made a presentation at the last meeting related to establishing an exemption for historic neighborhoods and buildings. And I would just like to suggest to the council that having an exception for established historic neighborhoods and buildings gives an opportunity for adaptive reuse to occur. Certainly, the inclusionary zone pricing could be negotiated with adaptive use in excluded properties, but it gives all development a pause to think carefully about how historic neighborhoods and buildings are to be reused. Thank you.
Okay, Robert, thank you. Appreciate you being here. Our next registered speaker is Mark Oleniak, who wishes to register opposition. Mark, welcome. You have the floor. No, Mark's not? I'm surprised. Okay. Karen Breen, you are our next registered speaker. You also wish to register comment. Come on up. How are you today, Karen? Nice to see you.
I'm Karen Breen of Breen Associates. I live in Point Breeze, and my office is in East Liberty. I'm here today in my role as planning consultant to Walnut Capital. We respectfully request that the legislation be tabled to allow further work on both process and substance. First, I'd like to address process. Much care has been taken during the Oakland Plan to bring the public along. That same care has not been taken with the zoning change process. We've repeatedly requested a redline document that identifies the zoning changes. Although various documents have been provided, a legal redline version has not. This is standard practice for changes to law, and the absence of that places the onus on the average citizen, let alone council members and stakeholders, to verify that all changes have been highlighted, and it increases the probability that there'll be additional cleanup to the bill in the future. Furthermore, the only maps that are referenced in the zoning text are those that are posted on the Engage PGH website. They're confusing at best, misleading at worst. For example, the interactive map on the website has a series of data points associated with different dates showing different maximum allowable heights. We respectfully request that prior to any action on this legislation, an official dated map be provided to accompany the text. Next- Next, I'd like to speak to the substance. The legislation before you restricts the recently enacted zoning that is the basis for investments in planning and real estate transactions for some of the most expensive land in Pittsburgh. These revisions were made to the enacted legislation without discussion with stakeholders and property owners. Further, these revisions have lacked rationale. Even when it has been shown that these regulations would not be consistent with historic design in Pittsburgh, nor more recent signature development, requests to revisit and provide rationale for these limitations have been ignored. In my testimony of September 14th, I highlighted some significant changes from the UCMU as enacted versus the legislation that was presented to you. Those changes have not been rectified. They include building length reduced from 400 feet to 250 feet, the layering of inclusionary zoning on top of the bonus point system, which disincentivizes residential development. The UCMU legislation produced a landmark agreement for affordable housing between Walnut Capital and the mayor's office without inclusionary zoning. In fact, it led to a deal to produce over 40 affordable housing units in the first phase of development, which to our knowledge is more than the inclusionary zoning overlay has produced in Lawrenceville since it was introduced. Finally, the use standards for educational classroom space has essentially removed classroom buildings from the UCMU and UCE districts. As these points illustrate, I'd like to reiterate that the draft legislation before you today demands more time and attention to make sure that the spirit, intention, and details of the Oakland Plan will be reflected in the legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Perfect timing. Councilwoman, if you'll indulge, which is not the norm at public hearing per se, but Director Dash, or Deputy Director Dash, did you wish to register comment now or wait till the end of all speakers? Perfect. Thank you very much. Karen, thank you. Randy Sargent, you are the next registered speaker, and you wish to register comment in favor of. And we just lost our internet connection. Okay? We'll be back in a moment, I'm sure. Are we okay? Oh, good. Randy, are you with us? No, he's not here. I'm very surprised. If they should, if any of the ones like Mark or Randy should come in, we will take them later on. Our next registered speaker then is Richard Kaplan. He too wishes to register comment in favor. There's no Richard Kaplan. Okay. David Brennigan. David Brennigan is our next registered speaker wishing to register comment, and David is not here. This does not vote well. Forgive me, Eric MacAdangdang. I hope I said that correctly. Eric is not with us either. Jody Lincoln. Is Jody Lincoln with us online? Jody Lincoln is not with us. Christina Howe is our next registered speaker, and Christina is not with us. Georgia, are you, okay, you wished, Georgia had made a request earlier if she could please be listed at the end of the meeting, which I was happy to accommodate. Dominic Victoria, you wish to register comment in favor? Okay, not here. Derek Desler. Derek Desler is not here. Michael Madden is our next registered speaker, and Michael wishes to register comment. Michael, the floor is yours, and welcome.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, council, and thank you, members of the planning staff. I wanted to thank everybody for their time and effort through the last three-plus years of this planning effort. This is something that I think will transform the way Oakland will look in the future, and something that will be transformative for not just the fifth and fourth corridor, but for our region's economic future. On behalf of the Pittsburgh Innovation District, we ask for additional time to consider the outcomes of the proposed zoning change ahead of us, currently ahead of us here now. And thankfully, we will be able to come together as a group, I believe, and figure something out that will benefit all of Oakland, not just certain populations that are presently speaking here and have been around the table. The future of our economic region is coming to a long fifth and fourth quarter through this technology innovation district that we are building here in Oakland, and we ask for more time to consider these zoning changes to allow this district to reach its full potential. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate it. Our next registered speaker is Charles Elcorn, who is not with us. The next registered speaker wishing to register comment in favor is Henry Schwartz. Henry, you're here. Welcome. Henry, you have.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Welcome, Henry.
Thank you. My name is Henry Schwartz of the Oakland Real Estate Company. And, thank you. My name is Henry Schwartz of the Oakland Real Estate Company. My primary focus today is on the changes to the fourth, fifth.
Henry, I think you want to turn your TV or your computer off.
Is on the changes to the fourth, fifth. I'm sorry, I'm having feedback here, but.
Yeah, you can turn your camera off. That might help.
Is that better? Can you hear me now?
Yes, perfect. Thanks, Henry.
Sorry. So my primary focus is on proposed changes to the fourth, fifth corridor. These are all comments that we shared with Planning Commission staff over the couple of years, and we decided it was important to share these comments with the City Council. I wholeheartedly support the efforts of the Pittsburgh Innovation District, you just heard from Mike Madden and also Sean Luther, to position Oakland among the top innovation districts in the country. But this will require the new zoning code contain achievable height and density provisions, essentially better targeted bonuses, to create the next generation of innovation, research, and lab space. As currently drafted, the zoning proposal includes extraordinarily expensive costs for height and density and is not competitive with other innovation districts around the country. I understand that new development is occurring every day in Pittsburgh, in Hazelwood, New Liberty, and the Strip, and we're not looking to create more remote office space, but a place for integration and collaboration among Pitt, CMU, UPMC, and the companies coming to Pittsburgh to work with them. Oakland's competition is not other places than Pittsburgh, but it's the innovation districts in Boston, Austin, Philadelphia, even Tel Aviv. Most importantly, is Pittsburgh needs to find a way to position itself in the post-COVID real estate market of tomorrow. We've seen what's happened to large office buildings and the decrease in traditional office space, but the innovation district brings a chance for a new product in the real estate market. City Council has long supported economic development initiatives in Pittsburgh and has a unique opportunity to make a meaningful impact on the future of the fourth, fifth corridor. Currently, there are probably a million square feet of this type of space being built in similar cities around the country. If Pittsburgh does not embrace this opportunity, then other cities will fill their innovation districts with companies that might otherwise have located in Oakland. One of the challenges with Oakland is the lack of large, open, buildable lots. So unless enough density can be provided with this new code, one of two things will happen. Either we'll spend the next years in litigation, seeking variances, and otherwise uncertainty of developments, or what is more troubling is that a lot of Oakland will be torn down in order to get a footprint big enough to accommodate new development.
Henry, thank you. Your three minutes ran out. You're welcome, though, to send your comment via email into the Clerk's office, and I'll be happy to make certain that it is distributed to all members. Next registered speaker is Amnithie Rico Sandstrom, and Amnithie is not with us. Carol Hardeman is not with us. How about Helen Gerhardt? Helen is not with us. How about Ron Levick? Ron is not with us. Andrew Molnar, forgive me, Andrew is not with us. How about Mary McKenzie is not with us. How about Luciano Sholi? Good, welcome. Luciano, welcome. You have the floor. You may need to unmute your microphone. There you go. Perfect. We can hear you, Mr. Sholi. We can hear you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm calling in favor of building. Building what Oakland should be. We are a small business on Fifth Avenue. We are one of the last mom-and-pop businesses in Oakland. Without all these big buildings coming around spilling them, we will not make business. We will be gone. But without those developments, we'll have nothing here. I mean, we had the hospitals, but when COVID hit, we had nothing. So by letting these big companies coming like Walnut Capital and Pitt right next door to us, we had issues. We resolved them. They've been great neighbors. Any issue we had, they took care of us. No question that. We need development, and height restriction on Fifth and Fourth is not going to change. Everything is high already as it is, but we need to move the wheel. Give them the green light and let them build. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sholi. Appreciate you being here.
Yep, have a great day.
You too, Mr. Sholi. Thank you. Sean Luther is our next registered speaker. Sean is with us, and Sean wishes to register comment. Hi, Sean, welcome. The floor is yours.
Thank you, councilmen, and thanks for your time and council's significant work to keep these issues moving forward for the betterment of Oakland and the city. Many speakers today have already raised and will continue to raise valid and specific points that we support, including limited sub-districts, building heights, the ability to realistically utilize the bonus points as written, ability to include university uses and building lights. So I'll not go into detail and belabor those issues, but point you back to technical experts like Karen Breen and community leaders like Mike Madden, who have put so much time and effort into building the new, the now adopted neighborhood plan. However, I do want to reinforce that the issues being raised today are not done so in a vacuum. The final decision what Oakland's zoning code looks like will have very real impacts on the development framework and may work directly against our goals to build an inclusive innovation district that creates jobs and economic opportunity for as many Pittsburghers as possible. We are particularly concerned about three items. The inability to build lab and health tech facilities, which are particularly valuable employment drivers and require the most adjacency to university research centers; the likelihood of developers using the zoning appeals process and invalidating the adopted neighborhood plan; and circumventing City Council's land use authority; and development pressure on nearby residential neighborhoods not covered by the bonus structure, or developers seeking appropriate heights. The opportunity to create economic growth and opportunity out of an updated zoning plan for Oakland and the innovation district is vast. We continue to appreciate the hard work that staff, council, and our partners in Oakland have played in building this next-generation code. However, these are complicated issues, and we do not believe the current legislation fully solves for what we need in the community. Therefore, we respectfully request that you table this proposal and allow more time to work with staff, build a plan that accelerates rather than inhibits our translation of Pittsburgh's innovation and academic assets into jobs drivers for all of Western Pennsylvania. Thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you, Sean. Our next registered speaker is Ronald Reed, wishing to register comment. Nope, Ronald is not with us. Takes us to Mr. Jonathan Kamen, who I know is with us, who wishes to register opposition. Jonathan, floor is yours.
Good afternoon, and thank you for your time this afternoon, and to Councilman and Councilwoman Strausberger, thank you. Oakland is the third most significant economic engine in Pennsylvania. It's home to world-class institutions like Pitt, UPMC, and Carnegie Mellon. It's home to many companies, retailers, and professionals. Most of all, it's home to a dwindling number of residents. The purpose of zoning is to create a legal framework which governs the use of land. The idea is to create compatibility, spur responsible growth, and to ultimately create a vibrancy for all. After more than a year's worth of work and changes, I don't think anyone can say that the result of these labors has created a product that pleases anyone, let alone everyone. There are a couple of areas I'd like to focus on in my remarks, and also ask, as many of the speakers have asked earlier today, that we table action on this until we get it right. The first area is on the performance points. The performance points metrics as proposed are in many cases unattainable and impossible to achieve, thereby defeating their purpose. For example, with respect to affordability, which is something that I know almost everybody embraces, the code requires an adherence to various metrics which are inconsistent with many of the funding programs that are necessary to build these developments. Simply, you cannot have a framework that requires apples that have the funding programs only deliver oranges. The result of these inconsistencies will be that no units will be built that rely on these programs. Also, with respect to energy, height, and density, many of the requirements put in there are, again, simply unattainable. Again, the purpose of the points is to create robust development and to encourage developers to do more. The effects of these point systems being unattainable and difficult to achieve is that they will encourage the opposite, which is developers to not develop at all, or ultimately to do less. I think that there are also items that we've highlighted before with respect to bulk regulations and respect to operational considerations that need to be addressed. Many of the items contained in the ordinance are good and worth discussing, but unfortunately for a region as important as Oakland, and with the stakes being so high, good and almost getting it isn't good enough. I would therefore ask once again that these, that the passage of the legislation be tabled until the inconsistencies in the ordinance can be fixed, because I think this is too important, and I think everybody agrees on this point, for us to get it wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kamen. Appreciate you being here. David Vance is our next registered speaker wishing to register opposition. David, welcome. You are our next speaker.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Hey, my name's David Vance. I'm the chapter lead of local nonprofit Pro Housing Pittsburgh, and we strongly urge council to make some changes to the proposed rezoning of Oakland prior to passage. And so at this time, we strongly urge council to table the proposal until these changes are made. I wanted to start with one guiding light that we have as an organization. Housing is too expensive, and one of the primary reasons it's too expensive is that we simply do not build enough of it. Unfortunately, the reason for this is often zoning regulations like the one before council are often far too restrictive and spend too much time and effort catering to local landowners rather than the greater good of the city. Additionally, we firmly believe that Oakland is a place of tremendous opportunity and one that more people deserve to live and work in. While we're happy to see that the zoning plan will allow for greater heights to be built in Oakland in theory, the unfortunate aspect is the death-by-a-thousand paper cuts of how developers can actually reach those heights. An onerous system of bonus points, restrictions, and limitations will harm the economic viability of many projects, which will lead to one result: reducing the amount of housing that gets built. We've seen this play out in cities across the country, so it's nothing unique. But the opportunity we have today with the rezoning of Oakland is to right these wrongs. We encourage the council to amend the legislation to make zoning more permissive and bonus points easier to hit in order to encourage the building of abundant and affordable housing. We encourage them to allow greater heights, especially for residential uses as of right, and make bonus points easier to hit so we can encourage more residential construction; allow greater building widths, especially for residential uses as of right; allow zero lot lines for residential buildings in order to get more housing built on each lot; reduce requirements for upper-floor stepbacks, which reduce the number of units that can be built. Each restriction requirement or mandate the council includes in these zoning regulations will increase the cost of construction, which directly hits the rents of individuals that will pay to rent these units. In some cases, the regulations will completely kill otherwise viable projects. All of these outcomes are bad for our residents and bad for Oakland. We strongly urge council to table the vote on this final Oakland rezoning plan until these critical changes are made to support more housing construction in Oakland. Thank you very much.
David, thank you. Michael Regan is our next registered speaker wishing to register support. Yes? Michael, you're here. The floor is yours. Michael Regan is our next registered speaker, wishing to register support. Yes, Michael, you're here. The floor's yours. Michael, I think you might need to unmute.
Can you all hear me? Can you hear me?
There you are. Yes, we can, Michael. Thank you for being here.
Very good. Sorry about that. Yeah, thank you for having me. I appreciate it. Yes, as I'm interested, but I am in opposition of this, because I do believe we need to spend the time and focus on Pittsburgh's result and success here. Many, I've got on many of these calls, and many times, we speak to the people who want this to happen and need this to happen to bring innovation to Pittsburgh. I am one of those people. On the venture capitalists, early-stage funding companies inside and outside of senior, bringing them to Pittsburgh is my goal. This is the place where companies thrive. The cost of living here, the ability to work with our university system, such a tight-knit community like ours, is so unique. It is so unique. And I've been preaching about this for so long, and it's hard to get people to understand that innovation is a process that takes place from the city council team I'm looking at right here on my screen to developers, to entrepreneurs, to the capital partners like myself, to the communities which we lean on for advice and consultation. And we need to learn how to thread that and how to interplay that into these processes so that we can mimic some of the most successful innovation hubs out there, like the Bay Area, like Atlanta, like Austin, Texas, like Miami, New York, Boston. They have a roadmap there which we can follow. And I do believe that Walnut Capital has the right plan in mind. I do believe that what they're doing will result in the success that we're all speaking of today. So I appreciate the time, and I appreciate everyone's patience to make sure that we're getting this done and making that results and success. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Michael. Appreciate you being here. Robert Lincoln is our next registered speaker. Robert is not with us. Andrew Miller. Andrew Miller wishes to register opposition. Andrew, welcome. Floor's yours.
Thank you very much. So Andrew Miller with CBRE, Commercial Real Estate, office leasing broker in Pittsburgh. It's my understanding that educational classroom space is to be broadly defined to include ancillary utilization by educational institutions. Based on my experience leasing office space in Oakland, I expect that the 50% cap on usage will have a significant deleterious effect on occupancy of the buildings within the UCE and UCMU districts. I urge council to reconsider this limitation and not cap the area of buildings in these mixed-use districts that are permitted for uses related to educational institutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Our next registered speaker is Emily Gaspitch. I don't know if Emily's here. No? Yes, Emily is here. Emily is here. She wishes to register opposition. Emily, the floor's yours. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Emily Gaspitch, and I represent Carlo University as the Director of Capital Planning. We are concerned about the limitation to educational use space primarily in the UCE district. Since we've deferred the construction of our academic building, we may be looking to lease space in that area. And so that would be something that would be very constricting to us, and we would, at minimum, prefer that city planning staff with council look at maybe a higher threshold, 75%, if not eliminating that cap completely. And again, this is, you know, very constricting to us because we have deferred our academic space. We are also in opposition to some of the density requirements along the BRT line in this UCE district, and we would also like it to be considered an innovation zone. We don't do a lot of R&amp;D at Carlo, so it's important for this area to attract those types of businesses, life sciences, and medical technology businesses so that our students can have that in their environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Our next speaker is Vlad Kaplum. I hope I said that correctly.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you. Welcome. The floor's yours.
That was correct, yep. So first, I just want to say I agree with most everything that Henry Schwartz had said about innovation districts and competing with other cities, and that David said, David Vance said in connection to housing. So my name is Vlad Kaplum. I'm a new Pittsburgh resident. I moved here a few months ago from San Francisco Bay Area, which has a totally unaffordable and undersupplied housing market. So I like policies that increase housing supply and make it easier for people to build homes. So overall, what you guys are doing, overall, I'm supportive of. But before the council votes, I want to, I would like you guys to pause and reconsider the height and length limits. Those should be higher so that we can maximize the possible number of new homes and encourage development in this economically important part of Pittsburgh, especially in the newly identified urban centers, the two urban center zones. Excuse me. There are a lot of jobs in Oakland, and I can tell you from experience that being able to live near your job is an incredible quality of life boost. I was fortunate enough to be able to walk to my job for many, many years, and I hope that we can give that same experience to future residents of Oakland. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Vlad. Appreciate you being here. Next speaker is James Williams, who wishes to register opposition. Jim, welcome.
I'm the Councilman Cross, Councilwoman Strausberger, Director Dash. My name is James Williams, and I'm the Senior Director for City-City County Government Relations at the University of Pittsburgh, presenting a statement on behalf of the university. We appreciate the city's efforts in undertaking the important task of rezoning in Oakland. Unfortunately, even with the most recent amendments, the ordinance will have the unintended consequence of stifling new development and innovation in Oakland, including university projects that have been discussed at length with the city and the public. While we feel there are many changes that should be made to the ordinance, the university is asking for the following three minor changes. First, allow for up to 80% of the floor area in a building to be used for educational classroom space in the UCE district. Second, increase the maximum allowable building length to 300 feet. And third, remove the university-owned properties between Atwood Street and Oakland Avenue from RMU and keep the current zoning status for those properties. The current ordinance restricts educational classroom space to 50% of a building's floor area in the UCE. This will directly impact the university's ability to bring innovative development along Fifth and Forbes. We strongly encourage that, at a minimum, the limit to be increased to 80% to provide flexibility and collaboration consistent with the spirit of the ordinance. The maximum building length should be amended to permit up to 300 feet of building length. The original ordinance permitted a maximum building length of 400 feet, and the Planning Commission recommended this to be reduced without specifying a number. The most recent draft includes a 250-foot limit, which is far too restrictive for the Fifth Forbes Avenue corridor. Changing the maximum permitted length to 300 feet is a minor change consistent with the commission's recommendation and the properties in Oakland. Finally, the university-owned properties along Oakland Avenue should not be rezoned to RMU during the 2021 Institutional Master Plan process. The university clearly stated its intent to rezone these properties to EMI. Rezoning to RMU is inconsistent with the IMP process and prohibits dormitory uses, contradicting the university and community's intentions for the property. At a minimum, the property should be excluded from the rezoning. These are three minor changes that could be made without returning the legislation to the Planning Commission. However, the ordinance will have significant, wide-reaching impact, and the university urges the city to consider sending the legislation back to the Planning Commission for further community review. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. You're welcome to leave your comments with the clerk. Yep, thank you. I'll make certain that they are distributed. Thank you very much. Next, we have, wait, I have to, I think I have to go back to some as... Well, we'll go to Georgia first. Next, we have Georgia Petropolis, Oakland Business Improvement District.
Thank you.
Georgia, welcome.
Thank you. Welcome. Good afternoon, council. On behalf of OBD, we thank you, your offices. We thank Director Abrams, Assistant Director Dash, and their teams for taking the extra time necessary these past few months to revise the plan so it may have the most positive lasting impact. Planning for the future of Oakland is planning for the future of Pittsburgh, and we ask for more time to make sure we get it right. OBD is 100% aligned with the mission and vision of the Oakland Plan. Like you, we want a city of opportunity for all. We all agreed that the current zoning code was outdated and needed to be updated to meet the ambitious goals of the plan in order to create an opportunity for all, whether you live, work, or study in Oakland now or in the future. The future will not look like the past. This future will be built on the successes of the past. Oakland will, of course, continue to have the successful and flourishing low-density neighborhoods that we experience today. We support these neighborhoods to continue to thrive. And to complement these successful communities, we will also have areas of higher density needed to meet the goals of the plan. Part of this transformation of Oakland must look at what is needed to create the vibrant and mixed-use neighborhoods of the future, where working professionals can build their careers, where families and individuals in all stages of their lives can access affordable housing options, and where all Pittsburghers can start a business and benefit from the economic might of Oakland, where wealth building can be accessed by all. We recognize that this central Oakland we describe will not look like the central Oakland of the past. We recognize that the needs of a post-COVID Pittsburgh is drastically different than the needs of the past. Today, we ask council to table the vote and to send it back to staff to rework the code to better align with the vision and goals of the plan to meet the econo, that also meets the economic potential of the Innovation District. As you've heard from many of my partners today, this draft still has some issues that need to be addressed, and I will just highlight what's already been heard. There still is confusion around the building height maximum in the UCE district. We support the use of bonus points to encourage quality development, but the current system will discourage development use. It has the potential to be more effective. We need sub-districts to respond to parcels such as the Oakland Portal that require different context than the Fifth and Forbes corridors. Building length limits are incompatible with development plans underway, and we seek to have building lengths to reach 300 feet to be competitive in peer districts. And lastly, as you just heard from my partner at the University of Pittsburgh and from Carlo University, we also ask increase the threshold in the UCA of classroom use. The planning industry today recognizes that uses need to be mixed, especially if they're compatible, whether it's office, whether it's home, whether it's classroom. These could work. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Appreciate you being here. Thank you very much. We have two speakers that have connected since the first time I called them. First is Mark Oliniak. Mark, are you still with us?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Hi, Mark. Yes, we can. Mark wishes to register opposition. Mark, the floor's yours.
Okay, I'm Mark Oliniak. I'm on Juliette Street in South Oakland. My testimony today expands on points of opposition. There's still great concern. I strongly object to a three-minute limit plus a written statement with no opportunity to ask questions that will actually be answered in the very limited time, essentially days, to review changes from the last iteration of this legislation almost three months ago, some of which contain incorrect legal phrases and reference with no explanations. I want to state again for the record that I am not opposed to some changes in zoning or new development, but I am opposed to vastly overreaching changes to massive development that will permanently detrimental, be permanently detrimental and one step closer to eliminating even more residential area in any true sense of community. The former Marathon Gas Station is being redeveloped now without a single variance or of this legislation. I continue to challenge Council President Cale Smith to reveal the location of the abundance of slums she referred to that justify these catastrophic changes. I do support expanding inclusionary zoning in Oakland, but again, the fact that maximum heights can be achieved without any affordable bonus, any affordable housing points, requires at least that change and a more thorough review overall of the point system in addressing affordable criteria and extend the fines for failure to comply with any bonus point requirement should be for the life of the building. The Oakland inclusionary zoning should be presented separately like it was with every other expansion in the city. Numerous people have referred to the very unique nature of Oakland, yet these UC and our zones are not a proper replacement for the nature and content and intent of the open public realm nor the residential compatibility standards. If you look at the Height Reduction Zone Code, it's simply stripping away the protections against large buildings adversely affecting adjacent residential property. This change combined with vast rezoning of current residential areas like Wellsford Street, Ward Street, McKee Place, Hawken Street, and Place significantly reduces any real buffer in terms of height of buildings next to homes. That is especially true for the area encircling Coltard Avenue, where ground level is an extra 20 to 30 feet lower than surrounding zoning changes. Nobody wants to live next to such buildings or worse yet, behind them. Current building at Forbes and Coltard is a perfect example of that monstrous negative effect. By removing these protections and other increases and changes, the literal walls along the, along and adjacent to the Boulevard of the Allies will isolate South Oakland even further and obliterate the view of the cathedral of learning that thousands of South Oakland residents have enjoyed and cherished a sense of place and connection for nearly 100 years. Please do not allow this terrible inadequate substitute and unnecessary changes to irreversibly destroy that. I urge city council to reject or table to further modify this legislation with more improper residential community input. Changes should separate out inclusionary zoning, restore and create a better substitute for residential compatibility standards, reduce the maximum heights given by points, and expand the process to point, to get points for some community input on the impacts of those heights en massing similar to the zoning board hearings. I will be sending a more detailed written statement along with this. Thank you.
Okay, Mark, thank you for being here. Next, we have Ronald Reed, which has joined us, who wished to register comment. Ronald, are you still with us? No, we lost him. Okay. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone here who wishes to register comment that is not registered, now's the time to do so. No? Anyone online that we have not got to, Alex, that may wish to register comment? Okay, then I'm going to close the public comment portion of this public hearing. Councilwoman, if you'll indulge me just for one minute, I know Deputy Director Dash wished to sort of address some of the comments that were made?
Well, I guess if there are any specific questions that council members have relative to any of the comments as opposed to responding to all of them.
No, then maybe I may have misunderstood. Councilwoman, do you wish to register comment at this time?
I don't really have substantive comments. We've worked very hard over the last couple of months and clearly over the last several years, but I do feel that there's still work to be done, so I look forward to diving into that work. Thank you.
And I'm going to just echo your comment for the sake of brevity, Councilwoman, and thank one and all for a tremendous effort, a lot of work. Director, let me ask you just one question, though. There were a number of requests to table the legislation. The timeline on which we are on here to complete this is a legal timeline. Is that correct?
That's correct. I may defer to Kate Rakus on what the timing of what we presently have approval for as far as the length of, you know, as far as the timeline, or Corey Lehman, zoning administrator, is on as well. If either one of them might be able to respond to, you know, what we have requested to city council that, you know, as to the length of time.
I'm happy to entertain either of you who wishes, if they can, to address the multiple comments that we've had to table the legislation, which, if I'm understanding it correctly, would violate our legal responsibility to conclude this. Am I correct in that?
Yeah, I can respond, although it would take me probably 30 seconds to figure out the exact date. But city, the Planning Commission is acting as the applicant, and so they have agreed to two 30-day extensions for council to hear the legislation and complete the public hearing. So we are closing in on the second of those 30-day extensions, although that does now, I guess, that does now close out the timeframe that council had to hear the public hearing.
Great, thank you. I didn't mean to put either of you on the spot with the exact particulars, only to deliver the message to many of the speakers today who wish to see the council table this bill that at this point in time that would be impossible for us to do. Councilwoman?
For the purposes of those listening in and here today, Kate or Corey, would you be able to explain what would happen if council sought to extend it another 30 days or to a time beyond the new year? What would that? What would that, would that trigger anything in particular?
It could risk deemed denial and basically a full reset.
Or our failure to act?
Correct.
Councilwoman, further?
Thank you.
Question or comment? No. Thank you all very much. Appreciate you being here today. I know this is a difficult topic, but we are committed to see it through, and we will. Director, Deputy Director, thank you. Councilwoman, thank you. If there's nothing further, I'm going to call for a motion then to conclude this.
Well, I'd like to add that Councilwoman Lavelle and I are also online, listening.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't see you. Where are you, Councilwoman or Council President?
Yeah, I might have to photo up, but Councilwoman Lavelle is also on. I just want people to know that.
No, thank you very much for making that clarification, Council President, and I'm happy, happy to reiterate that our Council President, Teresa Cale Smith, and our Finance Chair, Daniel Lavelle, are both here and participating via Zoom. Thank you, Madam President. Appreciate it. Councilwoman?
Apologies. One more question. Didn't know if Kate, you were able to pull up that exact date, just while we have everyone listening to try to minimize the number of individual communications necessary. Don't mean to put you on the spot, but if you were looking it up, I wanted to see if you had found it.
Give me one more second here.
Take your time. Thank you.
I can at least assure you that Kate would be able to find it quicker than me. So the planning commission agreed to an additional 30-day extension. The second one was made on November 14th, so that would be coming up pretty close to that 30 days from November 14th.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Kate. Thank you, Corey. Appreciate it. Andrew, anything further?
No.
Okay, Councilwoman?
No.
Okay, all right. Madam President, Councilwoman Lavelle, anything further?
No, thank you. I've been listening.
Yep, no, thank you. With that, then may I please have a motion to adjourn this public hearing?
So moved.
And I'll second it.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1744.47]